Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out on this night that was snowing, not snowing, and now it might snow a lot. I appreciate you all here tonight. I also want to thank Triple Valley Media Works, their government arm, for recording our meeting tonight, so we have many more people that can be at home on their computers watching and listening to this board meeting as well, so I thank them all for participating, too. It was nice for me to have that option when I was in Cleveland this past week and I wasn't able to attend. I could watch and listen to the whole meeting, so I could stay on board with what was going on, so I appreciate that a lot. You can watch additional board meetings on Channel 994. So if board members, if you want to watch what our board meetings look like, sometimes it's kind of fun to watch it and give yourself feedback on how you are as a board member. It's right next to Channel 995, which is Wisconsin Eye, so you can kind of switch back and forth between legislation and yourself, which might be fun. I don't do that very often, but sometimes it's something to do, okay? Let's stand for the pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Patty, are we in compliance with the open meetings law notification?
Yes, we are.
Thank you for always doing that for us, and will you roll call us for a quorum, please? Commissioner Duex?
Here.
Commissioner Hamburg Boyle?
Here.
Commissioner Harder?
Here.
Commissioner Luganville?
Here.
Commissioner Vu?
Here.
Commissioner Torres?
Here.
Commissioner Bika?
Here.
Thanks, everyone. Pull us right into our public forum portion of the board meeting. We have this every board meeting, which gives our community and our staff and people an opportunity to address the board. These are viewpoints and concerns that are on the agenda or non-agenda items, but we don't take on anything that has to do with personnel or individual people. That's just not appropriate at this time. We have one person signed up. Get four minutes. We'll put a little timer up to kind of remind, and please state your name and your address. And we have one person signed up, and it's James Nugent. You have to come up to the mic, please. Thank you.
Sorry.
That's okay. And you just have to turn it on till the light comes on and state your name and address, please.
All right, my name's James Nugent. I'm at 2950 West Hoyam Lane, 54703. I guess I'm, I guess just a few thoughts on our facility use policy. I just kind of started looking at some things today, so I apologize. I don't have a ton of specifics, but I guess in more of a general sense, as both a community member and a parent of a high school athlete, a elementary school athlete that uses it with the youth programs, as well as a 10-month-old who is going to be using this, or you're going to have a kid in the district for like 26 years, but...
We're glad for that, thank you.
But when I look around at, I came from a small school, and when I look around at some of the communities that I grew up around, you had, the gyms all summer long had one night of volleyball, one night of baseball, one night of basketball. We played soccer in there in the evenings, and I guess I would just ask that the board kind of looks at the facility use policy between current athletes at the high school level, as well as the youth programs within the community, and we should try to be as open as we can. Those buildings, there, there's a lot of money that the city of Eau Claire, as taxpayers, put into those buildings. We take a lot of pride in those buildings. You watch people come to sports games, whether it's down at Carson Park, which I know is a city facility, but you go to the basketball games, the volleyball games, people are proud to have people come in from other communities and show like, hey, this is what we've done. We got some new scoreboards. Those are really cool. Let's see what we have. And being able to use those and have our current athletes have as many opportunities as they can to get in and practice and use those facilities, as well as our youth, we want to encourage to continue to be involved in school activities. And whether that's athletics, or if that's choir, or band, or forensics, or whatever other extracurriculars, whatever facilities they're going to be using, we want to encourage that and have as much availability of that stuff as we can. So I guess I would just ask, as you guys are looking at those policies and changing those policies, we should be opening those up more, we should be going in the direction of opening them rather than where do we need to close them on days, what restrictions do we have to put on them, things like that.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Being the only person on the list that will take us on to our superintendent's report, Dr. Harabek.
Thank you. So I'd like to review the upcoming Board of Education events. Tomorrow at 7:00 PM, there will be a meeting of the Parent Advisory Council. On April 4th at 11:30 AM, there'll be a meeting of the Budget Development Committee, and both of those meetings will take place here at the Administration Building. On April 5th, there will be the Golden Apple Award Dinner, and that's at 5:30 PM at Wildridge. April 16th at 8:45 AM, there's Policy and Governance Meeting, and that's followed by this regular school board meeting that evening, and both of those meetings will take place at the Administration Building. And then Demographic Trends and Facilities Planning Council will meet at 4:30 PM at the Administration Building on April 19th. So I wanted to call the board's attention to the Every Student Succeeds Act, because it's going to have some implications for us as we go through our budget planning. Beginning in 2019, the Every Student Succeeds Act requires districts to publicly report per pupil spending by school, not by district. School-by-school information must include money spent on staff versus other expenses, such as curriculum, textbooks, and classroom supplies. We now report that to you on a district-wide basis. We also will have to report what proportion of that spending comes from federal, state, and local sources, which we do. The socioeconomic picture of each school's enrollment based on student poverty levels, and we already do that through our Opening of Schools report, and then the demographic breakdown of student enrollment by racial, ethnic, and other designations, such as special education and English language learners, and we already do that in our Opening of Schools Civil rights activists expect that the reporting of school-level spending amounts will reveal to the public where districts' most experienced and highest-paid teachers work, which buildings, if those data are presented in a comparable way. Well, Kay Marx puts that data together for you in the Opening of Schools report now, so you've had access to that data. The other piece of this is that the U.S. Department of Education now requires that every local education agency that receives Title I Part A funding under the Elementary and Secondary Education Act to articulate how it will ensure that low-income students and students of color are not disproportionately taught by inexperienced, ineffective, or out-of-field teachers. And we give you a licensure update each year in terms of our hiring. But the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction has produced a report for each district that indicates which schools have been identified as having an inequitable distribution of teachers, and only two schools in the state were identified with staffing that did not avoid disproportionality. ECAD had no such schools. Our district report indicates that we have an equitable distribution of teachers, and I'm happy to report that. And I, once again, I'm bringing this mandate to your attention, because now it will be a formal part of our budget planning and our reporting, and I think it will factor into the decisions that we make about our resources and our staffing.
That's it. Thank you. Thanks, Dr. Harabek. I'm just going to do a quick president's report update. I want to introduce those that are running for school board. The election is tomorrow. We have Commissioner Luganville. He's completing a full term and running. He's up here. We have Commissioner Torres, went through being voted into the board vacancy last April, and he is running. We have Commissioner Bika, went through being voted onto the board vacancy last June and is running. Then we have Josh Clemmons. Is he in our audience? No, he is running as well. Tim Nordine, want to stand up, Tim? Is running. Thank you. We also have John Plewa. Is he in the audience tonight? He is running, as is Lori Klinkhammer. Is she in the audience? No. So there will be seven running, four openings, two full terms, and the rest of the people, as the votes go down in number, will be assigned to the openings that are left with so many years. And I get mixed up as to where they are. I just ask people, hope you're on the board along, you know, two years, one year, whatever, so thank you very much for running, everybody. Also, the Week of the Young Child, is April 16th through the 20th. I said last week, and Catherine was so kind to read my report, that I would connect you with some things that were going on in early childhood in the month of April. So I touched base with Heidi White on this one, and there are a couple of things going on at Prairie Ridge. There's a Play and Learn playgroup that's going on April 6th at, from 10 to 11:30. That's kind of a playgroup that comes in with their parents, and it's a parent and child playgroup that has become quite popular, and they have quite a few parents that participate in that, if anybody's interested from the board to participate in that. And then they, I wanted to go all year, too, their Conscious Discipline Workshop. They're doing one on April 16th from 5:30 to 7:00 PM, and that's an ongoing training that they're doing with their families at Prairie Ridge, so know that that's on there, too. And I sent you this stuff electronically, too, so you'll have it. Again, I want to bring up the opportunity to testify at the Blue Ribbon Commission on public school funding in Turtle Lake on May 21st. I'm wondering, we have, whether, I would really like to know if we would think about changing our school board meeting that night so that people could testify. You can testify until 6:00. Depends on how many people sign up for it. We could get back in time. I would, I would like to testify, so, and if there's anybody else administratively or on the board that would like to testify with me, I would like that, so. It starts, it's from 1:00 to 6:00. So you never know. You have to get there early enough and sign up, because I've testified before. You know, you can get in quick and you can get out. Some of the powerfulness of it, though, is to sit there and really listen to the other people who testify. Being up in the Turtle Lake area, we'll be one of the largest districts to testify, but it is really interesting to get the perspective of the smaller districts and funding as well. So I think it's important for our voice as a board, this is what the time they're giving us to really speak about funding and what we think about it, and maybe some solutions that you all might have to offer them. So I leave that out there, maybe to think about what we could do on that day, okay? Celebration of Service for Retiring Employees, that's probably one of our most amazing days to thank people for giving to our district, is May 23rd. As a board, we go to that, too, so if you can, put that on your calendar. New WASBIE orientations for those that get on the school board tomorrow, good luck to everybody. That orientation is in Duran from 7:00 to 9:00 on April 17th. We usually go as a group. And the Puddle Jump Walk, as a board, if you want to walk with me on that day in honor of, of, of an amazing kindergarten teacher from Longfellow and raising money that way. It's April 21st, so, okay? Thanks. That concludes my report, and that takes us on to school board committee, or the student reps. Who wants to go first tonight? I'm sorry, I almost forgot. Ryan, go ahead.
Good evening. Last week, I talked about having a discussion with students regarding school safety, and after talking to students at North, we think that having a scheduled homeroom that opens with a direct message from our principal on the announcements, followed by a conversation with the homeroom teacher would be most beneficial. Hopefully, this would be very direct and to the point regarding threats, and students could have any questions answered. Earlier today, I sent out an email to all the school board members regarding a survey that Laura and I are planning to put out at both high schools. Please respond to that if there are any questions that you would like to be asked. I'm hoping to put it out after the next meeting, so before the next meeting, please get back to me.
Ryan, will you let us see what the, what the survey looks like?
Yeah, of course.
Okay.
And then I was looking, again, I was looking at the facility rental conditions of use, which is on the agenda tonight, and I couldn't agree more with what was said earlier. I remember when I was a kid, I was, I was a basketball player up through about eighth grade, and I go to all these schools, and they're very nice, very nice schools, very good facilities, and I think, well, why can't you have that at North? But nope, we never had the North turns. We had to go to McPhee every year. So I was wondering, and I know, I know there's some red tape there, but just as a member, always looking for, looking and wondering that in middle school, so I hope that's something that we can consider. But specifically, I was looking at the gym space section, and which talks about coats, boots, and street shoes being prohibited in the gym, and I am not really sure how that will be enforced, and I'd be as interested in some of the specifics, although it seems a little, be really hard to enforce, so I'd be interested in hearing more about that. And then regarding the academic class rank thing that's on the, that's up for vote tonight, a lot of work's been gotten into it, and it's kind of one of my original issues when I first applied to this, and I really hope it has a positive impact on further classes at the high schools. Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan. Lauren?
Good evening. I'd like to build off of what Ryan mentioned about discussions about school safety. As he said, I think there needs to be a real and direct discussion with students at the beginning of the year. When we had our original bomb threat, Principal Collett went on the PA system and told kids what the consequences were of those threats and those actions, and even still, as we saw, there were threats throughout the year, most recently last Monday. So I think talking to kids more than announcements, Ryan said, having a direct discussion with them would be important, and there are multiple occasions to do that during the beginning of the year. So I really think that needs to be on agenda for principals to talk about next year. Some school news outside of that. Spring sports have all begun. Obviously, with weather such as today's, there have been a lot of indoor practices, but those are all in full swing. Last Wednesday, I believe it was, I want to say '86, but well over 80 new members were inducted into the Memorial Chapter of National Honor Societies, so that was an exciting day. Last Friday night, Memorial hosted Uganda Rock, which, as always, was a fun night and a successful fundraiser. And next week, Wednesday, Student Council will be hosting its annual Red Cross Blood Drive. We hope for a lot of support and turnout for that. So that concludes my report.
Thanks, Lauren. When is the blood drive?
Next Wednesday, April 11th.
All day?
First through sixth hour, so not seventh hour, but otherwise all day.
Okay, takes us on to our committee reports. Does anybody, Budget Development?
No updates.
No updates? How about Demo and Trends? Thank you, Commissioner Bika.
The Demo and Trends Committee met on March 29th, and I think it, most important thing to emphasize is anybody with interest, expertise in school boundaries, especially elementary school level, but also thinking about middle and high school. Demo and Trends is reorganizing into work groups with the goal of presenting some long-term options to the board in May. I think they're fully aware of many complex and interacting factors that are associated with school boundaries, and completely committed to data-driven decision-making, so we welcome anyone from the public to join us.
Thank you, Commissioner Bika. We don't have a LEAP report. We will next time. Policy and Governance, Commissioner Luganville.
I'll share an update tonight for Policy and Governance, and then a brief one for Special Education. Last week's meeting, we discussed Policy 445 regarding school resource officers, and then we had a first reading for that at our last board meeting, and then there were some suggested amendments, so we talked about those again this morning, and we're bringing that hopefully final draft to you tonight for, we can have a first reading of some of those new sections and then vote on it as an individual item. We also talked about last week our facility use agreement, and we agreed to bring that forward for tonight for a board-wide discussion, and along with that, there are several policies you will see tonight that are related to new state legislation regarding the elimination of course options and youth options, and new programs to replace those, which are the part-time open enrollment, technical college course options, and early college credit programs. So we have all of those policies up tonight for possible first reading. And just a brief Special Education update. The next meeting of the Special Education, PTA, is April 12th. It's a Thursday at Flynn Elementary, and there is childcare provided. It's always from 7:00 until 8:30, but it's a great time just to sit back and listen and hear feedback, and we always get ideas, so, thanks.
Thanks, Commissioner Luganville. Any other committee reports, minor committee reports? Seeing none, we'll go on to the legislative report, and that is again Commissioner Luganville.
Hello again. Long time. So today, Governor Walker announced that technology for educational achievement, or TEACH grants, are now available to eligible school districts and libraries as a way to enhance the role of information technology and to enhance the role librarians play in support of education. So they have a May 4th deadline for these grants, and for more information, people can visit teach.wi.gov. Following the signing into law that I mentioned in my last report of the legislation that creates a $100 million school safety grant program, today, the Attorney General issued a statement that any school that is interested in applying for grant funding may submit a short letter of interest to the Department of Justice. So I'm thinking that we can discuss that at Policy and Governance, because we'll be talking about school safety at the next meeting. As a result of that legislation, they're also creating a new department, which is the Department of Justice Office of School Safety. That's just being established, I think, today, and they're currently searching now for their first director. Two bills were signed into law this past week that were supported by the School Boards Association. One, Senate Bill 159, which updates our statutory educational goals regarding nutrition education, and Senate Bill 301, which is actually very good news for schools. It expands the kind of online summer or interim session classes that qualify for state aid to now include classes the school board determines fulfill either the statutory graduation requirement in health education or its own requirements for graduation. So under the bill, online classes in any combination of vocational education, foreign language, fine arts, and other courses that we determine would also meet the requirements for high school graduation, and therefore would be eligible for state aid. So that's good news for districts. With tomorrow's election, voters will see a referendum question that asks them to consider amending the state constitution to remove the Office of State Treasurer. Because this ballot question has received relatively little attention in the media and elsewhere, one might ask, why does it matter to school leaders to talk about this? One of the state treasurer's most significant duties is to serve as one of the members leading the Board of Commissioners of Public Lands, along with the State Attorney General and the Secretary of State. This is relevant to school leaders, because this group generates investment income for schools and school libraries in the form of library aid. It loans money to local governments for public purpose projects, and manages over 75,000 acres of school forests in Wisconsin, mainly in northern and central parts of the state. If the amendment to eliminate the state treasurer is approved tomorrow, the lieutenant governor would replace the treasurer with those roles, thus basically losing a separate check and balance from the governor's office. Because of the potential impact that this could have to the Common School Fund and State Trust Fund Loan Program, our school board passed a resolution regarding this, urging citizens to vote no tomorrow on this referendum, and you can read our rationale on our district webpage under the Board Resolutions tab. And as I did last week, I finally want to share the website of the students across the country who are calling for legislative action as a response to recent school shootings. Their website is marchforourlives.com. They have five policy proposals that you can read on their website if you're interested in learning more about their positions. And speaking of students who make their voices heard, I want to explain this photo on my desk. This is, for those of you who don't recognize her, this is Linda Brown, who just passed away about one week ago. She was the little girl behind Brown versus Board of Education, which changed public schools forever in America, and I think her legacy serves as such an important reminder to all of our students, especially right now, how important their voices are and how they can truly change the world. So I'm going to have her hanging out on my desk, I think, for about a month, so that's my report for tonight.
Thanks, Commissioner Luganville. Well done. That takes us on to our consent resolution agenda. We are going to pass this resolution agenda en masse unless you pull anything to clarify or comment, which hopefully you've let Patty know that it might be pulled. So I will entertain a motion to approve the following. The minutes of March 26, 2018. The Human Resources Employment Report. The Referendum Project bids for McKinley. And revisions to Policy 345.5 Academic Recognition System.
I move 6.2 through 6.5 for approval.
Thank you. Can I have a second, please? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Very well. There you go. I remembered this time. Very well. So with the approval of the employment report, you approve the appointment of Jacob Donzie for the position of Robbins Elementary School Principal, and he is with us tonight. Jake, would you stand up? Mr. Donzie's coming to the Eau Claire Area School District from Plainview Elgin Millville Community Schools in Minnesota. He's served there as the pre-K3 school principal since 2010. He also previously served as an English teacher, staff development coordinator, and a curriculum director in that same district. In addition to his role as principal, Mr. Donzie is also an instructor of reading for graduate-level students working toward their K-12 reading certification at St. Mary's University of Minnesota. He received his bachelor's degree from UW-Madison and his master's from St. Mary's University. So Jacob, or Jake, as you said, we welcome you to ECASD. We look forward to your leadership at Robbins and to your continuing Robbins tradition and vision that all students will succeed with no exceptions. Congratulations. Now, I have, I had hoped that, you know, Jake could stay around and meet, you know, a few people, but with the weather, I've told him if he thinks it's getting bad and he slips out, we'll meet him at another time. Yeah, we're a friendly board. You can come back anytime you want.
Yeah, but you're from Minnesota. You should be able to hack it.
Welcome, Jake.
Thank you.
Yep. You bet. Okay, that takes us on to an individually considered resolution, our revisions to Policy 445, law enforcement officials and school resource officers. We're going to pull that up. We spent time again today with our partners, the Eau Claire Police Department and Policy and Governance, and what we'd like to do, I'm going to hand it over to Joe as Chair of Policy and Governance. We're going to go through the changes we made today and then hopefully be able to vote on it tonight, okay? I'm handing it over to you, Joe.
So I will, I will read through each section in blue, which is the changes from the last reading that we had, and after each, each blue section I read, I'll just look around and see if anyone has a question. "The ECASD and ECPD are committed to anti-racism. SROs shall discharge their duties with due regard for the racial, cultural, or other differences of those served. The ECPD shall provide law enforcement services and enforce the law equally, fairly, objectively, and without discrimination toward any individual or group. The ECASD and ECPD will work collaboratively to challenge hate, bigotry, and intolerance. Will use compassion when pursuing justice, and will respect at all times the dignity of others." Is this okay with everyone? All right, the next blue section. This is a brief change that states that the SRO is not typically the primary responder or investigator of disciplinary or behavioral issues that arise at school events taking place on or off a school campus. Just to clarify that. Is this fine with everyone? Okay? And then under the Selection section. "A diverse team consisting of the building principal, a building employee, one parent/guardian, an ECASD executive director, and representatives from the ECPD shall be charged with matching the knowledge, skill, and disposition criteria necessary for the position of SRO, and with selecting a new SRO for appointment to the ECASD." Is this good with everyone? Okay? This next is just adding the, adding, clarifying when we talk about levels, that we're talking about developmental levels and not just grade levels. And the next section, SRO access to student records. And the next section, SRO access to student records. An SRO must contact a building administrator in order to obtain access to student records maintained by the school that are not law enforcement unit records. And, okay. If a student is interviewed by law enforcement officials without a parent/guardian or administrator present, the principal or designee shall explain the circumstances that led to the interview and place a written report of the incident in the student's file. If a request for a student interview is denied by the building principal or designee, he or she shall state the reason for such denial. Is this good with everyone? Okay? And then the Accommodation section. The SRO shall work with an interpreter service and/or district staff to accommodate students who speak English as a second language and/or students with disabilities or who may have disabilities in accordance with Policy 447. Okay? And the Notification section. If contacted, a student's parent/guardian may be permitted to attend the interview at the discretion of the principal. Parents/guardians may not be permitted to attend such interviews in situations where law enforcement and the principal believe their presence would impair the investigation. Under the MOU section, the Eau Claire Area School District and City of Eau Claire Police Department shall maintain a memorandum of understanding for the School Resource Officer Program. The MOU and this policy shall be reviewed on an annual basis. And then under number one, under Accountability Reporting. B, name, gender, and race or ethnicity of student. C, information on the daily interactions SRO has with students and school staff. And D, reporting data disaggregated by categories of victim, witness, and suspect interviews. This information shall be collaboratively used as one tool to evaluate program efficacy. So those are the changes from this morning. But if everyone's okay with them, then we can move it.
Commissioner Duex.
I move approval of the policy.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Torres. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It's done.
Could I just say something?
I'd like to thank, yeah, go ahead.
Okay. I really want to thank, we have Matt Rokas and Andy Wise both here in the audience from the Eau Claire Police Department.
Please stand, please.
And they've been really, they've been very patient and very helpful partners and friends throughout this whole process with us. And I just want to thank you very much. And I know that, and I'm already hearing that this policy draft is being shared across the state now by other entities. It's a good example, and I'm really happy about that. So thank you very much for all of your help. And I wanted to say thank you too, that you can pass on. Thank you to all of our wonderful SROs. They're doing an amazing job in all of our schools. So, thank you.
I thank you on behalf of the entire board. That was a wonderful journey to do together, wasn't it? Yes. So that takes us on to, we're going to adjourn to committee, committee reports and items for discussion. And the first one on the list is our dual immersion project. And I'm looking to see who's doing this one.
We have Dave Oldenburg and Brianna Smith doing this one. This is a follow-up from the February 5th presentation.
Yep.
And just showing our next steps and some feedback we need from the board.
Thanks Jim, and welcome.
All right, I'll get us started and then we'll bring Brianna in for the wisdom portion of the presentation. So we want to remind the board that we did talk about this on February 5th, our dual immersion program. And we give the board an update at that time that we're in exploration of what a dual immersion program at the elementary level would look like within the district. We have, thank you. We want to remind that the dual immersion program would carry forward the board's strategic plan in these cross-cutting areas. A dual immersion program really involves a significant partnership with folks in the community, some significant staff development, certainly reflects different cultures and representation within our program, opportunity for social, emotional growth for all students, and certainly, as Brianna will demonstrate a little bit later in our presentation, advances the charge of academic achievement set forth by the board's strategic priorities. The dual immersion committee is made up with a plethora of folks, Brianna and I, Dr. Torres sits on the committee. We have representations from El Centro, cross-cutting across the district, both elementary teachers and their administration. We have a parent member, UW Eau Claire is represented as well, and then experts in specifically Spanish being the language that we're targeting for the partnership. So I'm going to ask Brianna and I to talk a little bit about Spanish while we're focusing on that, to talk about the upcoming listening sessions we would like to propose for the board to direct us to conduct, and then some of the next steps if it's the board's pleasure for us to go forward.
Good evening. Thanks for having us back. So a question that has come up frequently when we talk about a dual immersion program in the Eau Claire School District is why Spanish as the target language that we would use in this program model? So big picture, we think we're preparing our students for post-secondary success, and we live in a global economy. There are 21 countries spread across four continents that Spanish is their language for business, government, and daily life. Also, here in the United States, Spanish is the second most frequently used language. Thinking more locally though, the state of Wisconsin has numerous school districts that have dual immersion programs that have shown success, and they have used Spanish as their target languages also. And they are also very open to districts like us who are thinking about implementing a program and helping us, you know, implement a program, sharing with us the roadblocks that maybe they had and how they overcame them. There's also numerous resources and materials out there that would support Spanish as the target language. For example, our elementary math curriculum is supported with the resource Math Expressions. Right now, if we wanted to start delivering math using math expressions, it's already available in Spanish. So there's numerous resources and materials already out there that, right at our fingertips, that are available in Spanish. So just, you know, a few reasons why we chose Spanish as the target language for this program. So you saw this timeline last, at the last board meeting. I just wanted to refresh you that, you know, this year has been our planning year and the year that we've been digging deeper into the research behind implementing a dual immersion program in the Eau Claire School District. With the board's approval of this implementation timeline, next year's focus will be on professional development and curriculum development. In a couple of future slides, I'll touch on what that would look like. And then the fall of 2019 would be when we would like our first kindergarten class enrolled and up and running for our kindergarteners. So the reason we want to do the community listening sessions, I think the biggest reason is really to develop that sense of belonging in dual-language programs for students and families from all cultural and linguistic backgrounds. This program would be open to any kindergarten student in 2019 who is enrolling in the Eau Claire School District. It's not a, like a, you have to be invited to be in this program. It would be open to every student who is enrolling. Also, what is very crucial is for the community to understand what a dual-language program is and what it is not. There's a lot of misconceptions out there, and we really need to make sure at these listening sessions that they understand what a dual-language program is and what it would look like in the Eau Claire School District. It's also important, if we're going to move forward this, that we have the support of the community. We need to get feedback from them to know that they would be supportive of us moving forward with a dual-language program in the Eau Claire School District. And it's also crucial for them to understand that implementing a dual-immersion program is a long-term commitment for the Eau Claire School District. It's not a something that we're going to start for two years and then pull back because that would be detrimental to any student that we put in that program. It's a long-term commitment because we all know, as I talked about last time, there's an implementation dip or like a data dip that you see with those students, and you don't see that achievement increase until about third or fourth grade. So we really need families and the community members to know that this is a commitment that we need for at least four years to show that this program model is working in the Eau Claire School District.
Brianna, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So in essence, what you're saying is that you'd need the assurance that this was a long-term commitment?
Yeah.
Thank you.
And then professional development, as I talked about in the implementation timeline, next year would really be focused on professional development and then curriculum development. There are some, if you have a dual-immersion program, we would be adding new curriculum to the Eau Claire School District and needing to find resources and materials to support that. This would be the first time the Eau Claire School District would be teaching literacy to our kindergarteners in another language. There's going to be specific professional development we need to equip those teachers with to make sure that they know how to teach literacy to our students in another language. It's also crucial that any teacher that is instructing in a dual-immersion program has a strong understanding of second language acquisition strategies. At every minute of a student's day in a dual-immersion program, there's going to be a child in that room receiving instruction in a second language. So we need to make sure that those teachers are equipped with the strategies to deliver that instruction. So that would be another piece of professional development we'd want to provide those teachers with. It's also important that they understand how to use assessment in a dual-immersion program. It's crucial for them to understand when they need to assess the students in English, when they need to assess them in Spanish, or when they need to assess them in both languages, and then how to use that data to, you know, adjust their instruction in their programming. And then another piece of this would be making sure we have professional development for the administrators that are overseeing this program. We need to make sure that our administrators truly understand the program model that we choose to go with because they're going to be the ones that make sure that it's being held to fidelity. They're going to be holding those teachers accountable, so we need to make sure that we provide them with the proper training as well to make sure they can oversee and supervise those teachers in a dual-language program. Another piece is...
That's a good question.
Oh, yeah. Go ahead.
Well, I just wondered how, when you will start the professional development, and how many people would you allow into that?
So there is a training this summer that we would like to be our first. It's the Carla Institute over in the cities, which is through the Center for Applied Linguistics. That would be a training that helps our district kind of establish a scope for the program. And to that training, there's an administrator piece and then a teacher piece. And we are hoping to, myself and Dave would go, and then administrators from the building or buildings that we choose to hold this program in. And then we do have two teachers that have a bilingual licensure currently in the school district, so we'd invite them to come. Not that they would necessarily be teachers in our program yet, but for them to help us with the planning and the preparation because they have that background. So that would be the first one. We will go to, and then the Center for Applied Linguistics has numerous offerings moving forward that we would offer to every teacher as we added them to the program. So it wouldn't be an overly large number like the Summer Institute. I think the largest group we would have would be about 10 people that we would send. Yeah. Any other questions on those top two? No? Okay. And then the social and emotional supports. You know, we are going to be creating a new program, and it's going to be a program within a school where there's a different program running. So we want to make sure that we're supporting these students' needs when we think about their social, emotional supports of, we're going to be putting them in an environment with, where their programming is going to look a little different. So we want to always make sure that we keep that in the background and support our staff when it comes to those needs for the students as well. So this is the same budget that you all received in a memo. So just to kind of go over a few pieces of it, the Spanish materials piece will be a cost that we will incur every year until we've reached fifth grade. And that's, like I said, we will have to purchase materials to deliver on the district curriculum in another language. So when we get to, when we decide to deliver math instruction in Spanish, we will have to purchase all the math expressions materials in Spanish. When we're delivering literacy in Spanish, we're going to have to really build our classroom libraries, purchase a lot of books in Spanish. So that's where the materials cost will be incurred every year until we have all of our classrooms established K-5. Professional development, which I just talked about, the Carla Institute, which I referenced this summer, would be a one-time cost. And that number up there represents us sending 10 people to that institute. And then the 5,000 would be the cost that we would incur every year. Like I said, it's important we equip those teachers in that classroom with those strategies they need specifically to instruct in a dual-language classroom. And then the busing, again, it's real important to know that that's really dependent upon where the students are coming from, and then if they choose, you know, to get transported by bus or not. So that number is dependent on a couple variables.
Could I ask a question just...
Commissioner Luganville.
When it comes to the Carla Institute, are they just with Spanish-speaking programs like this? Or do they have other?
No. The Carla Institute is for any district looking at a dual-immersion program. So if you're looking at like Mandarin or, you know, any language, it's really to give you the language strategies and how to establish a program model.
That's great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So, and I guess the reason I asked it is because then I'm just thinking, a lot of probably what you would have there in terms of resources and tools from that institute, you could maybe take elsewhere if you wanted to develop something different in the future that would apply, right?
Yes, yeah. So like some of larger districts, you go and they have dual-immersion programs in various languages. Yeah, and so like, once you have your program model and your scope, you could duplicate that with another language.
Commissioner Harder.
And on the topic of the Carla Institute, it says one time parenthetically.
Yeah.
Sorry, could you just clarify if you ever said, it says a one time per teacher, one time per the district?
No, one time for the district. Yep, so that would be something that we would, moving forward, if we were going to implement it in 2019, we'd want to go to that this summer. So we got everything we needed to really focus on curriculum and staff development this next year.
To go forward then and conduct listening sessions, we're thinking up to four around the community. Then bring the results of that listening session back to the board, adjust any timeline for implementation based on feedback that we get from listening sessions and what the board's interest might be. And then, then ask for the board at that point then to consider making the financial commitment in the FTE equipment or commitment to go forward with the program. So that's what we're going to put on your plate now and ask you to give us some direction on.
Commissioner Luganville.
So logistically, are you looking for the board to approve, to approve a preliminary timeline, and then if it needed to be tweaked later? Or do you just want us to specifically just approve the listening sessions?
Yeah, thanks for the opportunity for clarity on that, Mr. Luganville. What we're asking the board to do is to direct Brianna and I and our committee then to conduct the listening sessions up to four and then bring a report back to you based on the feedback from the community, answer any questions, and then if there's adjustments to the timeline and any, if there would be a budget adjustment to discuss at that time. Thanks, Joe.
Anyone else? I was going to clarify that too, so thanks, Joe. I was going to ask, as far as the listening sessions and then coming back to the board, the budget pieces of this, will that be taken to budget development so that we know the impact of that on our budget?
Yes, that would be part of the process.
I think we need some feedback from the community at this point. Okay, so really, I just need a motion on a board member okaying the...
We're in committee.
Oh, we're in committee, that's right. Sorry. Discussing next time.
So if you wanted to discuss next time and take a vote, or you could put it on the consent agenda, either or.
So if it got put on the consent agenda, it would just be to give consent to do the listening sessions, correct?
Sure, or if there's any concerns at this point with the direction that we've laid forward, both in the February meeting and today.
Yeah, my only concern is the budget and, you know, where's it coming from and what are we not doing when we do something like this? Because that's kind of how the budget works these days. So, okay? All right? Good. Anybody else have any questions? Commissioner Duex?
Well, I just want to thank you, and I'm very positive about this. I grew up in South Texas near the Mexican border, and we weren't allowed to speak Spanish at that time. So it makes me happy to hear that we are considering other languages being important to education.
Well, it's an opportunity for our district to be more reflective of the students and their families within the district and give... their families within the district, and give opportunities of students cross-cutting to grow in both dual immersion. But, in addition to that, just that opportunity to have more and different programming. So we appreciate the opportunity.
I think it's an important conversation for our district to have, and we need to do that. Yeah, thank you for your hard work on this. Much appreciated. Okay. Thank you. That takes, oh, anybody from the audience have any comments? I wrote it on here too. Ask the audience. Seeing none, we'll go on to the discussion and possible first reading of new policy 343.44, part-time open enrollment. Let me pull that back up here. So you will see on the list tonight, I'm going to have Joe kind of go through some of these. I think we had, Tim was involved in some of the enrollment stuff as well, so pipe in there as well. Mary Ann, you were too. So, you will see that we're going to talk, do some first readings of new policy and then rescind the old ones. What I want everyone to realize as we read through these policies as board president is the impact on the budget on some of these as when we pay for credits and 75% of credits, whereas parents now can pay 25% of them when in fact they didn't have to do that before. So there's a lot of legislation relative to unfunded mandates here as well. So, pick that up as we read through them because I think it's important for you to realize how that impacts our budget as well. Okay. First reading of policy 343.44, part-time open enrollment. Do you have anything else to say, Joe, about it?
Well, just to explain what the part-time open enrollment program is, through the end of this school year, students have the opportunity to take individual courses in other public school districts through course options. However, there will no longer be that option moving into next school year. What they're doing is they're reinstating an old program called part-time open enrollment. And what we have to do is basically, as a school board, set specific parameters and criteria that we'll use when accepting or denying students for part-time open enrollment. So that's what this first policy is.
Can I make a comment as well? And Tim, you can okay this, is the fact that open enrollment used to be a set time that families could open enroll. That period of time is almost year-round now. So even though it's called part-time open enrollment, it's a kind of a misnomer in a way, correct?
Right, what you're thinking of is the regular open enrollment and alternate open enrollment, which are for full-time placements in our school. This is referred to as part-time open enrollment because public school students are only accessing up to two courses in our high schools versus an entire program. But yes, open enrollment, for all intents and purposes, exists year-round in Wisconsin.
Thank you.
Do you want me to read?
Sure. You want to start, and then anybody tired of reading will pass it on.
Yep. Under the part-time open enrollment program, a student enrolled in a public school in the high school grades may be permitted to attend a public school in a non-resident school district to take up to two courses at any one time. Provisions applicable to all part-time open enrollment applicants and participants. If a student wishes to participate in the part-time open enrollment program, the student and his or her parent or guardian are solely responsible for, one, following all application procedures; two, providing express notice to the applicable school districts that confirms the student's intent to attend a course into which the student has been accepted; and three, meeting relevant deadlines as such requirements are further defined in state law, any applicable state regulations, or the policies and procedures of the applicable school districts. Failure to submit a timely and complete application or a failure to allow other mandatory procedures is grounds for loss of the opportunity to participate in the courses. The executive director of administration shall be responsible for, one, ensuring that the district appropriately processes all resident and non-resident student applications for the part-time open enrollment program; and, two, determining whether the district will approve or deny individual applications based on the criteria established in state law, any applicable state regulations, and applicable district policies and procedures. Transportation to and from any courses taken under this policy shall be the sole responsibility of the student's parent or guardian unless state or federal law otherwise requires a school district to provide transportation. Resident high school students attending individual courses in other public school districts. District high school students who are residents of the district may apply to take a course in another public school district in Wisconsin under the part-time open enrollment program in accordance with state law. The district shall deny a resident student's otherwise timely and complete application to attend a course in another public school district under the part-time public school open enrollment program if, one, the course conflicts with the student's individualized education program, i.e., or, two, the cost of the course would impose an undue financial burden on the district as determined by the school board following an administrative recommendation to consider the issue of cost in a specific situation. The district shall remain, shall determine whether each course identified on a resident student's application satisfies any of the district's high school graduation requirements. The district shall notify the applicant in writing if a course will not satisfy a graduation requirement. The district shall pay the cost of a resident student's approved course to the extent required by state law and by the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction. Non-resident high school students applying to attend courses in the district. Non-resident public high school students residing within the state of Wisconsin may apply to take up to two courses in the district under the part-time open enrollment program in accordance with state law and established procedures. Non-resident students seeking to enroll in specific district courses under the part-time enrollment program shall be subject to same criteria, to same criteria that are used for making course-related eligibility and acceptance decisions for students who are district residents. Such criteria include space availability considerations and meeting applicable course prerequisites, academic requirements, proficiency standards, and conduct-related requirements. However, up to the point at which the district issues formal notice or acceptance or denial to a non-resident applicant, which will occur no sooner than six weeks before and no later than one week before the course is scheduled to begin, the district will give preference, i.e., ahead of a part-time enrollment, i.e., ahead of part-time open enrollment applicants in making acceptance and placement decisions for individual courses to the following. One, otherwise eligible students whose primary enrollment and school of attendance is or at the time of the applicable course will be within the public schools of the district, including students who are not district residents, who are regularly attending a school in the district under the full-time open enrollment program; and, two, residents of the district who are otherwise entitled to apply to take the course under state law or under any other board policy, e.g., certain students who are enrolled in a private school, tribal school, or home-based private educational program. If after applying the applicable preferences, the district has space available in a course for part-time open enrollment students and any other students who may be eligible to apply to take the course, but the district has received more qualifying applications from such interested persons than there are spaces available, the district will use a random procedure to determine which additional students to accept into the course. The district reserves the right to deny part-time open enrollment of a student who is serving the term of his or her expulsion from another school district. To the extent required by law, non-resident students attending courses in the district under the part-time and open enrollment program will have the rights and privileges of similarly situation, of similarly situated residence students, and will be subject to the same policies and rules as similarly situated residence students. The district shall provide equal opportunities for students with disabilities to attend courses in the district under the part-time open enrollment program. However, if a question arises as to possible services, or course accommodations, or modifications for a student with a disability, the district shall contact the student's parent or guardian and involve representatives of the schools responsible for the student's current i.e. or other services plan to the extent necessary and appropriate.
Thank you. Any input from the board? Commissioner Luganville?
The, this, I think we have a typo that, that's why we read through it. It's good. Similarly situated, and there's one that says similarly situation, so we should just make that similarly situated. Even though it's a fun, it's a weird phrase.
I don't like that tongue twister. I think that's, say that three times.
Commissioner Duex, did you?
Is there another way you can say that?
I think the verbiage was taken, this was taken from Wasby, wasn't it?
That was School Board Association suggestion.
Yep. Commissioner Harder?
I think, I was barely able to read it. But the, paragraph two of this section up above, I think there may be a typo on this first line of paragraph two as well with the, shall be subject to the same criteria? I believe would be.
Are we good? Commissioner Vu.
Just clarification for the nature of the policy. So, other districts have to do similar things that we do here. What is unique about all policy that is different from others?
Nothing is particularly unique, but we, every school district has to create their own policy to govern how we handle part-time open enrollment. And this, this policy looks very similar to what other school boards are doing right now because of the sample language from Wasby. There were a few tweaks, but for the most part, it's, it's pretty much a carbon copy of what other districts are doing.
We're mandated to do this. Legislated to do this. Yeah. Good question. Thank you. Anything else? So we're good to move it with the little edits? Okay? Okay. Any input from the audience? Seeing none, we're going to go on to the discussion and possible first reading of new policy 43.45, technical college course programs. Do you have anything to say before we get into the reading of it? Joe? Mary Ann? Tim? Any input before we go? Okay. Let me pull it up here. And I'll just start, is that all right? Yep. Policy 343.45, technical college course program, Start College Now program. The Eau Claire area school district shall offer a high school, should offer to high school students who meet eligibility requirements to enroll in one or more courses at a technical college that is physically located within the state of Wisconsin through the technical college course program. Prend Start College Now program. The Start College Now program allows a student to earn post-secondary credit while in high school. Programming for the Start College Now program is provided by technical colleges in Wisconsin. The director of academic services shall be responsible for determining whether the district will approve individual applications and pay for specific courses based on the criteria established in state law and district policy. To enroll in the State College Now program, a student must, be a junior or senior in good academic standing, complete an application for admission to the technical college by March 1st for fall enrollment, and November 1st for enrollment in the spring semester. Enroll in a course that is not comparable to a course offered in the district. If the student or family chooses to enroll in a course that is comparable to what is currently offered within the district, the student/family shall assume the cost for the course taken at the technical college. If a student disagrees with the district decision regarding comparability of courses, satisfaction of high school graduation requirements, or the number of high school credits to be awarded for a course, the student may appeal the district's decision to the state superintendent of public instruction within 30 days after the decision. The district shall cover the tuition, fees, and materials associated with a course taken through the Start College Now program. If the student does not receive a passing grade for the course, the family will assume responsibility for reimbursing the district for the total cost of the course. If the student/family does not reimburse the district for the course that the student failed, the student will be ineligible for any further participation in the Start College Now program. The district shall pay for up to 18 technical college credits for each student. The student/family will assume responsibility for any needed transportation for this program. Any questions? Commissioner Duex?
I, I find it surprising that they can take up to 18 credits. I, I mean, that's more than a year of work. So is, can you, can we-
Well, they take it over their junior, senior year.
Well, it just seems huge to me.
My question on that was, what would the cost be for the district for 18 credits? Did we ever figure that out?
We believe it's about $150 a credit, so for 18 it would be $2,700.
Okay. Thank you.
Do we have any assurances that those credits will apply to a degree? Or are they just ran, I mean, can, they might be random, and I know some students start in the technical college and then they want to move over to college credit, and those credits sometimes apply and sometimes they don't. So, I think a student has to be very careful what they select.
But there's no guarantee in the policy. I mean, I think, I think students would be allowed to take random credits.
Well, I'm sure they would, but with what expectation, you know, of a degree?
Yep. Anybody else? Yeah, go ahead. Dr. Hardback.
I think one of the things that might help with that concern that you have is the academic and career planning, plans that each student will have. So there will be a discussion about how this course might fit into that academic and career plan.
Thank you for that. Good. Anything, anybody from the audience have a comment?
One more.
Go ahead, Commissioner Duex.
Who's that, the 18, the 18 credits? Who set that number? I think it was legislated.
Okay. Yep. Commissioner Vu.
What is the parallel to, let's say, UW Eau Claire was stopped?
I think we're going to, yeah, go ahead. That is the next, we're going to do, the next one is UWC. So, then, do you want to maybe ask that question again when we're done reading that one? They all came at the same time because they were all re-legislated. Right? Yep.
Then, the other quick question, maybe we won't get to that too, but just asked. So the credit that there, that student take from a college would not be in addition to the 21 credit required for graduation from high school?
I, ask that, ask the question again. Oh, go ahead. Go ahead, Jim.
Every time a student takes a college credit, there's a conversion. It's a quarter high school credit for every one college credit, and then it does apply towards their elective credits for graduation.
Thank you.
And seeing no one from the audience, correct? You need to come up to the mic. It's okay. I know. If you do it a lot, then you get used to it, and it's okay.
Sorry, just curiosity. Where do they come up with the quarter credit conversion?
It's actually a longstanding district practice, and it was a, it's an inherited practice that we've had for several years. And if you look at many of the equivalent courses that are taken at the college or university level, they start to, it looks, there's a, it makes a lot of sense in terms of the amount of time you put in. So for example, like a, a four-credit class at the university, that translates to about a credit worth of work and content that you'll see, you know, one-credit high school course that goes across a course of a year. But again, every course is a little bit different too. So it's a little bit difficult if you, when you compare like a, perhaps a world language course with a philosophy course with a something else, but it's pretty close approximation. And we've reviewed it from time to time, and it still seems to be the closest calculation that makes sense.
Some of that comes from legislative, I don't know.
Yeah, no, the district had, the district had to do that interpretation.
Thank you for your question. Okay? Are we moving on? Let's move on to discussion, possible first reading of new policy 343.46, the early college credit program. I'm going to pull that up here, and anybody need to say anything before we start to read it?
Just the second part.
Yep, so Catherine, do you want to start this one?
It's bigger, I can't get it on my computer.
Do you want to do-
Okay, that's good. That's good.
Okay. Four-six.
The Eau Claire area school district shall offer to high school students who meet eligibility requirements to enroll in one or more courses at an institution of higher education that is physically located within the state of Wisconsin through the Early College Credit Program. The Early College Credit Program allows a student to earn post-secondary credit while in high school. Programming for Early College Credit is provided by an institution of higher education, quote-unquote, parent's university. The Director of Academic Services shall be responsible for determining whether the district will approve individual applications and pay for specific courses based on the criteria established in state law and district policy. To enroll in the Early College Credit Program, a student must, colon, be a junior or a senior in good academic standing, complete an application for admission to the institution of higher education by March 1 or fall enrollment, March, or May 1, for summer, and November 1 for enrollment in the spring semester. Oh, okay. Enroll in a course that is not comparable to a course offered in the district. If the student or family chooses to enroll in a course that is comparable to what is currently offered within the district, the student slash family shall assume the cost for the course taken at the university. If a student disagrees with the district decision regarding comparability of courses, satisfaction of high school graduation requirements, or the number of high school credits to be awarded for a course, the student may appeal the district's decision to the State Superintendent of Public Instruction within thirty days after the decision. The district shall cover seventy-five percent of the cost of a course taken that is not comparable to what the district offers. Families may be charged for twenty-five percent of the course. If the student does not receive a passing grade for the course, the family will assume responsibility for reimbursing the district for the total cost, cost of the course. If the student slash family does not reimburse the district for the course that the student failed, the student will be ineligible for any further participation in the Early College Credit Program. The district shall pay for up to eighteen university credits for each student. The student slash family will assume responsibility for any needed transportation for this program.
Thank you. Anyone have any input, questions? Ryan?
So is this a change from, like, for, like, say a student takes a course at UWEC, then you're saying that now it's from district calling full cost to only seventy-five percent of costs? Is that what it says there under the, one of the later paragraphs?
Yeah, Jim will answer that question because there are some changes.
The district may charge, but it hasn't been our practice in the past, and we would have to have a discussion if we changed that practice. But currently, it's just that we are, we are by statute allowed to, but.
But again, we're always talking about budget. Thank you for reading that. And I. Commissioner Vu, sorry.
So eighteen credit would translate to three thousand seven hundred and fifty, assuming ten student from UWO Claire attend, take advantage of that options. In the district budget part of it, do we have a anticipation of what the implication is for budget on a year-to-year?
We can cut.
It doesn't have to be answered today, but I hope to get the answer later.
Yeah, likely though, and what, right? So likely, we haven't seen a drastic change in the, in the participation in youth options. And really, these two policies are, are shift from the old youth options and course options programs. It's a differentiation that likely won't, we want to anticipate a drastic or even a significant increase in the number of students taking this, mostly because for a student to participate in this course, the course has to be comparably different from what we offer within the district. So a student just can't apply for UWO Claire to take a certain course without, if we have, so for example, an English course. A student can't just jump into an upper-level English course without having the necessary prerequisites, which they have to go through at our level first. And so they can't, and if, so if a student were to start with English nine, then English ten, and then take advanced placement language, advanced placement literature, that's a typical sequence that a student might want to do on a college track. If they were to want to not take our sequence to get there and take an equivalent course at UWO Claire, we would not be, we would not have to pay for that course. It's only if that, if they need to take, so if a student was accelerated and had gotten through all those courses, and then they'd exhausted what we had to offer, then they're gonna start taking courses like that. And we often see that with students, perhaps in mathematics, where they might get through that second year of calculus before they graduate. So if they finish our, our upper-level math as a junior, now they're looking around saying, you don't have any other math courses I can take. This is where they then start to tap into UWO Claire. So it's really quite often a student that has been on an accelerated track, periodically there may be a course that they find that we typically don't offer in a sequence. But, but if a student, if a student wants to access a course at an upper level, they have to have the necessary prerequisites. Likely that's gonna happen with us. And so unless they're being accelerated, there's not gonna be the, the population of students accessing that courses that would change our budget significantly at all.
Commissioner Dux.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I didn't realize my mic was on, but I'll just say that I was just checking with, Commissioner taught us about the placement on the campus for English. They, they used to have to take an exam to be placed in an advanced course, and if they didn't have that, they had to take freshman English. So, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Bika.
Would it be helpful to the district on both of these policies to specify exactly what's meant by a passing grade? Is there, do you, if you literally mean an F or D minus and above? Because there are university courses that a C or C minus would not be considered a passing grade.
We didn't have that discussion, did we?
Well, I'd, I would think the best way to potentially define that in the policy would be to cross-reference with the Academic and Career Planning Guide, because that does have a section in there about what's passing, what isn't passing, on the page, dual-credit college-level coursework, in, right in that guide. So I think that if, if we just cross-reference the title of that, then if folks want to get specific, they can just go right, I can find the page number to it. Page eight on the, page eight on the Academic and Career Planning Guide has that definition. So we could just maybe put that at the bottom of each of them as a cross-reference before we vote on it? Was that okay? Would that work for what you're? Oh, yeah. This is page.
I just wanted to comment, too. The reason we spend this kind of time as a board reading through policy is that policy is what runs our district, and it needs to be discussed in an open meeting like this one, where our community and the people that pay taxes and support us know exactly what we're doing. So we take a lot of time reading through policy like this as a board, because it's really informs our community about how we run things in the district. I, I thank you all for your patience tonight as we do this, and we've done a lot of policies in the last year.
I'm double-checking the links that Patty has in Board Docs, but I believe the language passing grade is state statute language. I, I'm just double-checking, but I'm pretty certain.
I think it was, I think it's how it was stated, but I think Commissioner Bika's question is well-taken. Mike? Right?
Can I add in? I'd like to answer Commissioner Vu's question, question about the budget and the impact. It looks like in 2016, 2017, and 2018, we've budgeted about fifty thousand each year. And so in 2016 and 17, we were in the thirty to thirty-five thousand dollar range, and currently we're in the forty thousand dollar range. So I would expect that we would continue to budget about fifty grand for that.
But it seems as though it's creeping up.
Yeah. It, in 2016, it was like thirty-seven thousand, and then it dropped to thirty-one. I think kind of like Mr. Schmidt said, it really depends on the kids and where, where are they able to take classes that will, you know, that we don't offer. So I think it's different each year. Okay.
Commissioner Logan Bell? Okay. So that takes us on to nine point five, which we need to rescind the two policies that these two policies took the place of. So I don't think we need to read through them at all. Just know that on the consent agenda next time, we will be rescinding the two policies that these policies took their place. Okay? Any questions about that? Any input from the audience on our last policy and what I just explained? Seeing none, we'll go to discussion and possible first reading of policy four-five-three point four, Administration of Medication to Students. And this one, when you pull it up, who wants to start with this one? Eric, Dr. Torres, do you want to start with this one?
Yes, ma'am. Medications should be administered to schoolchildren at home rather than at school whenever possible. District employees who are authorized to do so in writing by an administrator of the school district or his or her designee or by a school principal may administer medications to students under the rules established to implement this policy. These rules shall be developed with the assistance of a school nurse and adopted by the board. The school nurse shall be responsible for reviewing written medication instructions and consents, maintenance of complete and accurate medication administration records, proper storage of medications, and disposal of unused medications in accordance to district procedures. The administrator of the school district or his or her designee or a school principal shall be responsible for ensuring that the written medication administration instructions that are on file in the district are periodically reviewed by the school nurse. Authorized district employees who administer a prescription or non-prescription drug medication shall complete Department of Public Instruction, DPI, approved training before administering medication to a student. District employee who administer medications via any and all routes are required to complete the DPI-approved training. Students may possess, carry, and use emergency medications as well as self-administer their own prescription and non-prescription medications with the written approval of the student's licensed prescriber and parent or guardian, provided that the student does so in compliance with the relevant district policies and procedures. No district policy or procedure shall be interpreted to limit or detract from the immunities and other limitations on liability available under the law to nurses and other persons who engage in or assist with the administration of medication to students.
Thank you, Commissioner Torres.
You're welcome.
Any input from the board? So I had one question, and it's in the first paragraph, where it says, "These rules shall be developed with the assistance of a school nurse and adopted by the board." So the rules are done? And have we looked at them? And, you know, have we already adopted those rules? Because this is a pretty short policy relative to medication, but really, the rules would be the piece that runs the policy. And it says here that we need to, the rules shall be developed with the assistance of a school nurse and adopted by the board, but I, I haven't seen the rules.
Typically, what we do is, once you've passed the policy, then we work on the rule. So we will bring that to Policy and Governance for you.
Okay. So, all right, that, that explains that. Thank you. All right. Any input from the audience? Seeing none, that takes us on to discussion of eight-thirty, Exhibit Facility Rental Conditions of Use. And so I think that's Abby. We're just bringing up the changes, yep, there you go. Thanks, Abby.
Sure. We are ready to go. So this is my annual visit to talk about the facility rental conditions of use. And what we tried to do was highlight everything that is, has been talked about at Policy and Governance as changes. And so I will walk through them. And then if you have questions as we're going through, please just let me know. Obviously, the first yellow highlight would be that this would go into effect for the July 1st, 2018 year. And then, so that's right at the very top. Are you scrolling, or am I? Okay. All right. The second, a lot of yellow and red really relates to when the buildings are closed. We had some clarified language that we added last year to talk about holidays specifically. And so it seems that there's still been some questions about what those holidays were and how are they defined. And so we spent a lot of time talking about this at Policy and Governance. The first time it was discussed at Policy and Governance was January 22nd. They asked me to work with the Parent Advisory Council, the Memorial Booster Club, and the North Booster Club to get some feedback about what does that look like. And so I brought that feedback back to Policy and Governance last Monday. And so that's why we're here tonight, as the first reading and kind of discussion with the group. A lot of the discussion was about, should we be closed on holidays? What does that look like? I talked to a couple other districts, and it's very interesting, there's a big difference in what they do. Some districts require custodians anytime anyone's in the building, whether it's a coach or not. We don't currently do that anymore. There are some districts that shut the badge access off, and the building's closed, and nobody's getting in or out. And I found that very interesting. Again, another thing that we don't do. But because there's been a lot of communication issues and a lot of challenges this year, Policy and Governance thought it would be a really good idea to actually define the holidays that we're talking about. And so you can see that there listed out. The other thing that we talked a lot about was, what about the inequity for sports that practice off-site? And there's currently three groups of athletics that practice off-site. Obviously, the most obvious would be hockey, and they're practicing at Hobs. We have cheerleading that is practicing off-site, as well as gymnastics that practices off-site. So Policy and Governance felt it would be very appropriate to say district sanctioned events. So that would cover all of the athletic activities, whether they practice in our facilities or practice elsewhere, because the message that we discussed was that we want our families to take a break. And I would say the feedback that we got from the Parent Advisory Council was overwhelmingly let kids have a break. We need to have a break. And so we looked at that, and we brought that back and talked about that. When I met with the Memorial Booster Club, they, they had some questions. Memorial Day specifically came up because of the fact that we have marching bands march. And so if we say that there isn't practice, how does that impact the music program? Because that's that community event, and that's part of our strategic plan. We talked a lot about that, and what does that look like? And I can say that members of parent, some of the parents that we talked to, and also some of the members of Policy and Governance, said that their own children have experienced flexibility in the music program, and knowing that if a family was traveling for Memorial Day, that there wasn't this pressure that the child felt that they needed to be there. We're very different on the athletic side, even though coaches and other adults have said, you know, it's not mandatory, you can come as you need to. Those kids still felt the pressure to attend. And that was shared very passionately at the Parent Advisory Council meeting. I know several of you sitting around the table tonight were at that meeting. And I know I was very surprised at that response, because I wasn't sure what we would get. And it was very strong that, you know, let the kids have a break. When we looked at this year's calendar, for example, over the holiday break, because the holiday fell on the weekend, the, the number of practices were the same as they would be during the school year, it's just that they weren't back-to-back because the holidays fell on the weekend and the, the way that we recognized the holiday and then allowed building access. And so there's a lot of conversation and a lot of things that have gone into this. But I think this is a good recommendation, and I think that we are comfortable with it as far as, as far as Policy and Governance goes. And so, again, basically, the big change here is that we just wanted to say that they're district sanctioned events, and then that they are the observed holidays as defined in the Employee Hand. that they're district sanctioned events, and then that they are the observed holidays as defined in the employee handbook to include January first, Good Friday, Memorial Day, July fourth, Labor Day, Thanksgiving Day, the Friday after Thanksgiving, December twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, and December thirty-first. And that also, then we added that this includes facilities rented or used under agreement for practices. The other thing that's new that we feel will help with this communication issue is that the assistant principals and athletic directors at both the middle school and the high school level would bring the proposed practice calendar to that group. And we would have a committee of people looking at that to make sure that it's in compliance with the facility use policy. So that way, then, things aren't being communicated to families and then having to retract it, retract it later. I think that has been a contributing factor of our issue with our families this year. And so that's the additional piece that's added there, is that the assistant principals and athletic directors shall review the co-curricular schedules with the middle and high school athletic councils for approval prior to coaches providing calendars to family to ensure compliance with the policy. I know other districts do that. Actually, the middle school actually already, already does that. It was kind of ironic, after we had met in January and it kind of tossed that idea around, that that next middle school athletic council meeting we were at, they brought the schedule for the fall of twenty-eighteen already. So I think it's possible is another step, but again, I think it makes good sense to help and make sure that everybody's on the same page. We've got a lot of feedback about why are we enforcing the facility use policy and, you know, why is that? It's been in place for a long time. I just don't think that everybody has been really cross-referencing and double-checking it. And so that's why it's being looked at differently.
Any questions from the board? I, I have one about this.
Okay.
Okay. And because I was kind of involved in some of that stuff that went on last near.
Yeah.
If, if a holiday falls on the weekend. So you can't practice a Friday, but you can practice a Saturday, and then Sunday is the.
The holiday.
I can see on those weekends that if you get the practice out of the way, then you've got your weekend. And families haven't, don't split that up then. And I know that was a concern I just received again. Is, I, I think that, I mean, that makes sense to me. Like, why, why would, why would you do it that way if you could make it a.
Yeah, I can elaborate on that. When the reminder communication was sent out in early December, it shouldn't have been a surprise because the facility use calendar is out there in advance as to when the buildings are open or not. And Larry Summerfeld and Bevan Isle had a conversation about, how, how does that apply when the holiday falls on the weekend? And so technically, because we weren't, Saturday wasn't a holiday, and it wasn't observed holiday for the district. And so that's why it was broken up that way and given the opportunity.
So I think the language had to do with the holidays that are noted in the handbook. And on those years when we had the kind of situation that you're talking about, we would have to make an exception. Yes, in terms of, we'd have to, like, put that in the handbook language, and it would come to you as a modification.
I mean, that makes sense.
So could, so in terms of making that modification, so that in a future year, if that were to come up, that we could, is that something that we could ask the Handbook Committee to look at now and bring to us?
Yes, because they're going to bring, they have a few more modifications to bring to you probably in May. So that's something that we could look at, and I think it just would need a designation that, in that particular situation, it's just, it's an unusual event.
Right, okay.
I have a question. Commissioner Duett?
Maybe you said this, because you were going through this pretty fast, but what do the bands do on Memorial Day when they march?
They usually go into the building and the band room and get their instruments and uniforms, and then they may get dressed there, I'm not sure. And then they're going down to Carson Park. And so I would say Memorial Day is the day that we would get the most feedback from members, because you have the bands marching, and how do you say that we shouldn't, you know, if buildings are closed, how do you say that you can't do that because you have that community partnership? The other concern that I've heard is that for baseball and softball, WIAA regionals and sectionals are happening during that time. And I can tell you, this year, for example, on Tuesday, there are games scheduled currently. And so in speaking with some athletic directors, that's a, that's a, that's a concern. And we did talk at length during the first Policy and Governance about, do you have exceptions for specific days? Memorial Day being one of them. And the committee felt very strongly that the policy is to, to be, here's what we want our practice to be, and not have exceptions to those rules. So that's kind of why we landed on where we did. And I don't think anybody was opposed to the music students going in and getting their band stuff, you know, for Carson Park, because it's got that strategic plan goal, that partnership with the community, feeling that it was different than an athletic, a formal athletic practice, so. The other thing that I think it's important to remember, too, is on the building's closed day, is that with all of the importance of school safety and, you know, not having, you know, doors are left open and people can go in and out. And so are we also subjecting ourselves to anything from a liability standpoint? You know, if people know that the doors are open, or kids know the doors are open, they could potentially bring something into the school and hide it and, you know, get out and then use it later on. And so when I did ask for some feedback from some of the other districts, that was a big concern for them as well with all of the things that are happening right now around school safety. So something else just to consider. And I think really this was more just to, for our employees and trying to say, hey, let's, let's, we respect that family time. It's for our employees, it's for our staff, and it's also for our families as well to have that break.
Commissioner Luganville?
One of the, so beyond, you know, asking the Handbook Committee to, to look at that exception piece, adding that, another thing that I think that we should probably do in the near future, and maybe even at, like, the next meeting or a meeting in May, is just like we had the Equity Committee temporary with donations, I think we should have an Equity Committee regarding athletics with a district-wide look and a broad look at it. Issues of equity, access, opportunities in the school year, in the summer, within the school, within the community, get public and private sector folks, parents. I think that that would be really helpful, because I know that when we looked at the huge issue of the donations and, and that big question, you know, having that group that could break it down for us and dig in and then provide us with concrete recommendations. I think that, as we talk about issues of athletics, beyond just this, but just in, in general equity, which could include building access, I think that an Equity Committee could be a good, a good next step.
Go ahead, Kathy.
It is on our agenda for budget development to talk about athletic fees.
So that would be part of it, too? We, we had a deep conversation about it today in Policy and Governance. So there's another tie-in with budget development. Commissioner Vu? No? No, I used to look like you were going to, anybody else? Go ahead, Ryan.
How comparable is this no exception policy to the other, other districts in the Big Rivers Conference?
I'm sorry, what?
How, how comparable is, like, the no exception part of this that you were talking about, how comparable to the rest of the Big Rivers Conference?
We have only heard back from one of the Big Rivers Conference schools so far, so I'm compiling that data. But I can tell you, our neighboring, one of our neighboring districts in the Big Rivers Conference, they shut down. It's closed, and nobody's in that building.
Okay, because I just want to make sure Superior Hudson is not practicing on Memorial Day in the middle of the playoffs, or even that Monday when film sessions are really important for football, or even other sports. It's really, it's a really critical time, and people say it's just one day, but it's very critical.
Right, right. And that's why we're gathering some more data and getting the feedback. But I, we talked to Hudson today, and we didn't get feedback from Superior yet. So I imagine in the next few days, we'll be getting it.
Okay, go ahead.
Can I ask just for a clarification point? So on the employee handbook modification, so we have language in the employee handbook that talks about when the holiday falls on a weekend and when the district will observe it, depending on if it's a student contact day or not. So are you looking for something specific to, I'm just wondering, what, just you want something in there about facility use on those days, or? Okay, got it.
It just, just, in the sense of, of the, the time would be together, and the practice would be on either end. So it isn't like Friday, no, Friday you're off because it's the designated holiday. Saturday you practice, then you're off. And if families want to plan family time together, we're kind of sticking, we're sticking an extra time that they have to be somewhere.
Well, and I think part of that will help, too, just by having that calendar communicated at the very beginning of the season and looking at, when are we open and when are we closed? And then the coaches can decide, yep, the building's closed, I'm not going to hold a practice at all over that, that weekend or whatever. I mean, I think that.
But they could get a practice in the day before.
Yeah, I think we would want to look.
Yeah. And I, I think they said they'd do that in October or whatever, so we'd be part of that. Put it in that conversation as to when things fall and have that conversation done together and figure it out.
Patty, can you pull up? I just wanted to also share with the board the calendar that we put out on our facility use page. And so this calendar is used for lots of facility use. And it's not, it's very detailed because it talks about when our buildings are closed, and it's got everything kind of highlighted. And we're actually working on this for the eighteen-nineteen year. And so, again, the calendar is done quite a bit ahead of time. So that way, then, you know, again, just another place to look and another reference. And so I wanted to share that with the board as well, just so they can see some of the things we're doing. Do you want me, do you want me to pull it? Had it? That's okay. Oh, yeah. So this isn't a great view, but you can kind of see from the highlights, the yellow. Those are all of the days that are put out there, so that way then our community and schools know, here's when our buildings are closed. And some of them are different colored because sometimes we have things going on at different levels of schools. So that way, then, you can see on which days the facilities are not available for community use. And then when the, when the buildings are closed, for example, I'm going to use Good Friday as an example. So last Friday, Good Friday, March thirtieth, you can see it says, "All schools, buildings closed, Good Friday." And so, again, just another place to cross-reference and look at that. And I think we just need to do a better job of that across the district, so that way then we're not creating additional problems for families and concerns. Okay.
Any other questions with the one?
Public?
Well, we're not, do you want to wait for public till the end? Because I don't think we're done with the policy yet.
That's just one piece. Okay.
And then we'll give people a chance at the end.
Okay. You want to scroll a little bit? Okay. Okay, so the next part that's highlighted is really talking about weapons. And so we wanted to cross, cross-reference our Board Policy eight-thirty-two, which talks about weapon use. There's been some discussion about what does the state statute say? And so rather than getting all of the state statute wording in there, we decided it would be best to cross-reference our current Board Policy eight-thirty-two because that speaks to weapons on our properties. Number three, there's been some questions about what's the right number of supervisors that we need for events when we have kids in there and practices and things like that. And so it's not usually typically a problem, and usually if there is an issue, the Buildings and Grounds Director will reach out to that group and let them know that, you know, maybe there was an issue. And so usually, it's an ongoing conversation. But I know that there's been some questions about who decides what the right number of people is for supervision. And so we just added that clarifying point that the district would make that recommendation since it's our facility. This language is just to match our policy language with what our fee structure says. And so we had them, we had been saying registration fee, and last year we changed it to application fee, and we just didn't get it updated within the policy. So that's the purpose of those, the words there. And then under the cancellation and no show fees, basically, we've been saying to communicate with the Director of Buildings and Grounds, but in reality, they're, they're contacting the Facility Use Office. So we just made that recommendation. So, again, people know where we actually want them to contact. Under number three, again, there's been a lot of questions about, well, what if, what if it's a late start? What if it's an early cancellation? And so just added some additional language that says, "All after-school activities and events are canceled when schools are closed due to inclement weather." And then just making that capital S, that school facilities will be unavailable for the community, basically, is what we're saying, which has been our practice. Scheduling, we talked about this a little bit last year because there was some concerns brought forward that, forward that it wasn't necessarily equitable, and if you pushed your, send your email at twelve, twelve o'clock midnight when we started accepting applications, and depending on how many emails came into the, the system, like, they think they're first in line, but they're actually tenth, and so we had a lot of community members upset about that. And so last year, for the first time, we tried a district scheduling meeting for gym time. And it was really quite an interesting experience. We basically took big sheets of our, all of our facilities that had gyms and when they were available for use, and we invited all the groups in at the same time, and we had them put sticky notes up as to when they would like to request that space, so you could see conflicts right away. And it actually went pretty well. And that way, then, for the few conflicts we did have, the groups were able to work amongst themselves. And so we're going to do that again. We have a few tweaks this year, but we are hoping to get that done in May of twenty-eighteen. We sent a request out last week for the groups that use our facilities. Any group that has ever used our facility requesting gym space, an email was sent to them to provide us some, we're looking at the two weeks mid-May prior to Memorial Day. And so we're anxious to see, but that should be set very soon. And I think that was, it was well-received from the community end, and they all felt like they had an opportunity to look and see. And I think it was very eye-opening to see how much our facilities are open for the community and how many user groups there actually are, and how many kids are in our building. So it was kind of cool. The other thing, oops, Patty, I think I missed one thing on that. We did receive a request this year that was more than three-hundred-and-sixty-five days in advance to schedule our buildings. And because our policy had said, with the exception of Visit O'Clare, we don't allow people to schedule prior to three-hundred-and-sixty-five days. So we basically just said that there could be an exception to the rules made when we're aware of it, and then we would, you know, review that. Because sometimes these events are extremely large, and you need a full year to plan and advertise. And so it doesn't happen a lot, but we didn't, we didn't want to not be able to have that flexibility to approve it if it was something good for our community. So that was that language updated, number one.
Are you planning to talk about the classes?
We can. I don't have any recommended changes. Would you like to share?
Yes, I have a recommendation. I have objected to this before, but the Class Three gets priority over activities of children in Class Four. Activities of organizations that are located in the O'Clare School District are service civic, recreational, or educational in nature, and are comprised primarily of students. They are behind the Parks and Recs adults. And I think they should be reversed. So Category Four should be ahead of Category Three. It should be number three.
I think we had some conversations on this last year as well. And Commissioner Luganville, I'm looking at you, because I think that we came up with a reason why we didn't change it. And I don't, I know that there was some discussion with the City of O'Clare, Parks and Rec, that they are funded similar to us taxpayer money. We don't want to double tax. But I don't know what the other rationale was, why we didn't make a change.
I was proud of all that.
Oh, do you?
Yes, I remember that, because we had a long discussion about that.
We did.
I think it was that oftentimes the adult groups take the times that are later in the evening where the kids are not necessarily practicing. So it's eight-thirty, you know, I, I remember having that discussion.
And, and my, my feeling, because I, if, if that were only the case, then I would feel okay with them being where they are. But I'm not sure if that's the, the full reality, if they're only using the later times. And so I almost wonder if, if they can still have the higher classification for the later times, but then for the other times that they'd be below the student, the, the children groups, Class Four. So maybe it's separated. So there's the activities for adults through Parks and Rec that are between these hours, that students are not going to be using it. And that can be Class Three, and then a class below Class Four that is for, you know.
I think that sounds like a good compromise.
You know, one other thing that just came to mind as you were talking about that is that Parks and Rec adult activities, they don't always take the later times. I know they do, but they always take Wednesday nights because we don't have district activities on Wednesdays. And then they also try to concentrate. They'll pick, like, two buildings that they're in, so that way then it leaves the other buildings available. And so I don't remember there being a lot of conflicts last year with Parks and Rec, but I can certainly. but I can certainly reach out to the Parks and Rec Department and see, invite them to come back and talk or just say, "This is, you know, the proposal." I guess if you direct me on what you'd like me to do, I'll be glad to have that conversation.
Well, you know the high-interest hours and times for practices. So I'm just wondering if you could develop something, some sort of rough proposal that would split it up to have the later times be the higher, be a higher class still, but the times that are prime times for kids would be lower on the priority for the adults to use. So maybe you could just, and then talking to like Dawn and just seeing what they.
I think that sounds like a good compromise because we, we have always said with this policy that children, children's activities come first. But in this case, it, it doesn't, they don't.
Okay. Yep, it is. I'm just thinking about the timeline because I know that we want to get this back to be voted on so that way we can get it out on the website. We are hoping the beginning of May.
Well, this could be, if I'm not mistaken, this could be an individually considered item at like the second meeting in.
The next meeting?
The next, couldn't it be? Would that be enough time to have the conversation with Dawn?
I will do my best because I know we want to get this through and approved. So would, just bring it back as individually considered and provide an update as to the recommendation? Okay.
And if that doesn't work, we'll figure it out from there.
Okay.
You know.
Thank you.
Yeah.
You're welcome. Okay. Um, scrimmages, tournaments, and competitions, this is another one that we use a lot. We get a lot of feedback on. And so I heard Ryan say earlier tonight, "Why aren't we hosting those tournaments? And why are we going to U W Eau Claire? Why are we going elsewhere?" We've been doing a lot of digging, a lot of research. We've been talking with a lot of other Big Rivers Conference schools to see what they're doing. And so for the time being, I don't have a great proposal, but I'm thinking that we're working on it and how can we work together and maybe have one of the teams be the sponsor and the host as a fundraiser for the team? And that way then there, it's a district activity and it's not the outside group. What's really causing challenges for the outside groups is our staff to have it staffed for that long and to cover our custodial costs. It's not the cost of some of the other things. It's really that custodial cost which adds up quite quickly. And so we are looking at other schools. What does their policy look like? Is there something we can do? Larry and I have been brainstorming about, could we go to a flat fee model? Or is there something different that we could do? So expect to hear from me again on that. But for the time being, we did want to just add in there that if that is something that we do for next year, that there could be additional liability insurance covered, requested, and required from those outside groups. Because again, we want to make sure that we're protecting the district from a big lawsuit if something were to happen or somebody were to get injured. The gym news, the gym use. So there has been an issue this year with kids coming in from outside and just keeping the same shoes and using them on the gym floors. And so that's causing some potentially dangerous conditions, slipping and falling. The custodians aren't always right there to, you know, get a mop and get the floors cleaned up on the gym. And so the recommendation was that we work with our groups and recommend that they bring in clean and dry shoes to be in the gym at all times, just mostly a safety concern. And then coats, boots, street shoes, and other items really shouldn't be in the gym because again, we're, we're creating safety issues if everybody's piling their stuff in one area. And so the facilities are looking at providing some totes or something so that way then the groups can at least have a spot to put their stuff and kind of be able to keep it out of the way. So that way then, they put it in at the beginning of practice and can take it out at the end. So we are looking at some options to just make sure that we're being really safe.
Yeah, that was a question I had, Abby. Where, where they put it? And then you want to keep it in sight?
Right.
Really? Because that's your stuff?
Right.
Okay.
Yep, exactly. So we're working on, what does that look like? I don't think it needs to be in the policy. I think it just is okay to be part of our practice. Okay, so this is really in regards to camps and non-school district camps. And so most of the promotional materials now are not a piece of paper like they used to be and handed out. Most of it's electronic. So we just updated the language to say that the disclaimer should be posted on the promotional materials. And so that was just a rewording, I guess. Then our model for camps and clinics has changed over the last two years. And that's really because we are trying to prevent additional barriers from kids participating. And so it's become part of our summer school model. So we're not charging kids and we're providing that opportunity for all kids in our district. This year, we're even providing transportation from some of the schools to be able to get them to again, reduce barriers for kids to do that. And so basically, we needed to update our language to reflect, if it's a school year camp, it's going to follow the summer school model, but it's just going to look a little bit different because it's going to happen during the year. And so the language there, again, any of that information, the request for the camps should come through Athletic Council. It came before. And so this is just kind of reiterating that that school year camp needs to come through Athletic Council. And then it will move on to academic services once it's approved because academic services is the one that provides the funds for whatever is needed for that school year camp. And so one of the things that we talked about at Policy and Governance last week is that there could be all kinds of requests coming through, not just specifically to high school. And so we decided to just remove the words "high school principal" because an elementary school could ask for something. And again, that principal would really be the one that's saying, "Yep, this works in my, works in my building." And so it's kind of a conjunction and working together. But we didn't want to exclude and make it seem like only the high schools could be used. And then at number five, again, we just wanted to add "school year" because school year advertising is going to look different from summer advertising because the summer camps are part of our summer school booklet that we put out for everybody. Number six is the same thing. Again, we wanted to just remove the high school and just designate the principal. And then number seven, school year camps, again, we want them to run during the normal schedules of custodial staff because that's part of our policy is that when we're open to the community and other people and we do require the custodian to be there. And then we updated the, where the revenue and expenditures are accounted for and that's in Fund Ten, which is our general fund.
Abby, I had a question about that.
Yeah.
So we, did we, did we, used to cover some of this in Fund Eighty?
We did not.
Not, never?
No.
And we cannot do that anymore?
We cannot do Fund Eighty.
They took that away.
Right, that was one of the things that was taken away. Or it would have to be really clear that it's for the whole community. It just, it looks and feels differently in Fund Eighty. So I think we kind of just said we wanted to stay away from it. It used to run through Fund Twenty-One. It was a fundraiser for the groups. And so that's the change from ten to, or Twenty-One to Ten. We updated the language. We now, if you scroll down, Patty, to the next page, please. We have a model that we use for summer school and the pay and the amount of prep. And so we wanted to put that in there because the school year camps would have that same model as we do for summer school. And we thought it was best to have it in there so that way then it's just consistent. It's a go-to for everyone to see what does the compensation look like. And then again, all of the camps are paid on a time sheet and submitted to payroll. And then again, just clarifying at number thirteen, that students from other districts may be allowed to participate in the school year camps, but they will not be allowed to attend summer school because summer school is, we're counting the kids, it's going towards our revenue limit. And so in order to qualify for minutes and be able to, to receive revenue limit increases, they have to be our students. And so we were just clarifying that. In the past, we didn't, because it was ran outside and done as a fundraiser, we didn't have that caveat. And we did open it up, but this language reflects our current practice.
Would other districts be able to purchase our service?
Um, to provide camps?
To participate or have their kids participate?
They wouldn't be able to in summer school because summer school is our program and we can't, we don't get to count minutes for other kids from other districts in there. But for school year, I don't know if it's something, I guess we would, we would maybe need to talk about it. I'm looking at gym. I guess it's something we hadn't considered, to be honest. We.
Becoming quite popular, so.
Yeah, we could review it and let you know what we think. I don't know. That's, it's a grand idea. Okay, so those are all of the changes that we've got recommended tonight. Is there any other questions or things that the board would like me to look at?
No, thank you for going through all of them, Abby. Anybody? Nope? Do you want to have the audience come up? Anybody from the audience want to address the board? Please state your name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Brett Tangley. My address is four, five, six, five Meadowbrook Court, Eau Claire, Wisconsin. Good evening. I, I have prepared a number of notes and maybe for the interest of time, I'll get my big request out. And that is that I just plead with this board to take some time and get the facts. And I would take issue with some of the comments and the tenor and the statements that Ms. Johnson has made. I'm not sure where some of these facts have come from. They're inconsistent with facts and comments and calls that I've made throughout this district. I have not contacted neighboring districts. But I sure would like to see, and I would hope that you all would like to see what these neighboring districts are doing, what other schools that are of comparable size and stature to Eau Claire, and the people that we compete against in athletics or in band competitions or in plays, what they're doing that's comparable. And I would really ask you to get that information and to not rush to judgment on this, some of these issues. And I'm really pleading with you about that. I do know that I've called both athletic directors, both principals in, in the community. And I, I would make another statement is, I, I don't feel like I'm hearing that there's participation happening from the building personnel in managing this district. I hear a lot about what's happening in five hundred Main and I'm not sure that there's enough feedback coming from the people on the ground that are managing these buildings and managing them quite effectively. They're well-paid, well-trained, highly skilled people. And I hope their voice is being heard and I'm concerned that it's not being heard. I'm concerned that those people's perspectives are not being taken into account. Coaches, athletic directors.
Brett, I think we did talk about meeting with the Athletic Council. And these people that you're talking about are on that Athletic Council.
And so what, and, and so what I would say is, is, you know, I, I don't, I don't want to tit-for-tat this thing because that's not the purpose, that's committee work and I understand and appreciate that. But, but there's some consistencies here. Some of what Ms. Johnson reported about meetings that happened on January twenty-sixth, the tenor of the conversations seemed very different, the way they were expressed to me as to what Ms. Johnson's language and tenor and spirit of those meetings are. So there's a disconnect. I assure you, there's a disconnect with people in the community and there's a disconnect with people in athletics. I'm not sure about the music situation. I'm not sure about plays and the people that are in the performing arts arena. There's a lot of questions and, and I, excuse my, my tenor, but there's a lot of hair on this issue and it needs a lot of attention. And I don't feel like it's, it's been aired enough. So I'm really asking you to, to be real mindful and careful about making that decision. And, and, you know, Abby used the word "interesting" a lot. And I don't know what "interesting" means as a public person. I don't know, there's a lot of interesting dialogue. There was a lot of interesting feedback. I hope that you guys dig deep into what "interesting" really means. What are those things that are so interesting? What are we finding that's not consistent, et cetera? And, and I would just say this also, that I think it's a dangerous practice to, to, to border on the, on the, the idea that, that folks that would have practices on certain days, you pick those holidays. Those are somewhat arbitrary, some of them make some, are federal holidays. But we make those decisions to pick those days. And, and I don't, I think I'm hearing a tenor that, boy, if you don't support that, you're not for family time or that you don't value family time. And I, I just, I want to again urge you to say, please don't make those leaps. That's, that's a dangerous leap to make. And it's not representative of many, many people who are involved in all of these types of athletic or, or performing arts endeavors. And so I, I think I'll cut my remarks short, but this I will say. Athletics is a community endeavor as well. I understand the band and I will concur that the band is a community-generated thing. But the community comes to these athletic endeavors as well. They come to our plays, they come to concerts, they come to watch our athletes participate. And if, the checking I did, we've got eleven thousand students in our district and over a third of them are participating in some sort of extracurricular activity. So that would tell me that, boy, we got four thousand of these kids participating in these kinds of activities. And it's, you know, it's a, it's a one percent of our, I think, if I did my math right, it's a one-point-four million dollar expenditure athletics is, and it's a hundred and forty million dollar revenue budget. So one percent. And I, I, we're not spending gobs and gobs of money on this. It's making an enormous impact on students and athletes and people in our schools. All people. The administrators, athletic, teachers, everyone.
Brett.
And I just urge you to please, please slow down on a vote on this without more.
Brett, I just, I just want to make a comment that Abby has followed through with all the questions and the information that the board has asked her and has done and, and yeoman's work on this. And the other thing is, we did speak tonight about putting a committee together, an equity committee that would really look at this deeply, just as you said. And we're also, as a board, relative to our strategic plan, equity is who we are and, and who we are as a district. And so I think we need to look at the equity with sports, but also with achievement and academics and treat them both the same as well. So we're looking at that as well. So I appreciate your input.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Joe, Commissioner Lugenville?
Unless there's more in there. I can wait until more talk, but I.
Go ahead. Yep. Come on up. State your name and address, please. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ben Prem and I'm currently the president of the Old Abe Booster Club, representing Memorial Athletics. My address is four, two, two, four Pine Meadow Drive, Eau Claire, Wisconsin. And I would just like to echo a lot of the same concerns that Mr. Tangley expressed. I think there's a lot to this and rushing to a decision would be a mistake. I guess first point I would like to address is that I know Abby was directed to reach out to both Booster Clubs and she did attend Memorial Booster Club meeting. And my response to that or information that's passed along with that is that when Abby came in, we didn't know what the agenda item was. We knew that she was talking, coming in to talk about, you know, policy and governance, but I was not at any point informed that she was going to be talking about facility access and use. And so because of that, the Booster Club, you know, myself included, was not versed on the current policy or changes or the potential impact that it would have on our organization. And so I think if Abby were to come back to our next meeting, knowing what we know now, that our feedback would likely be different. As a second point, family time. I know you guys talked about a unique situation with how, you know, Christmas and New Year's this year and holidays that fall on the weekend. But let's consider holidays that fall during the week as well. There's a good chance, most likely, that either North or Memorial Baseball is going to play WA Baseball Playoffs this Tuesday following Memorial Day. So that means a, you know, a weekday holiday, Memorial Day, we're not going to be allowed to have practice. And if we have a playoff game, coaches are going to practice. When is that going to fall? Saturday or Sunday? So now again, I think, and you brought this up, is now we just took a weekend, a long weekend, and we broke it in half. And so if the driving factor is family time, I don't think we're accomplishing that with, with these changes. And, and I don't have the data to back this up. And so again, I would, as Brett said, you know, we needed to jump into this. And I think Mr. Lugenville advised that we have a committee around this. But my understanding and what I've heard from feedback from parents and others in athletics is that we're not consistent with other schools in the BRC. I have an email right now from, he's the parent of a girls' basketball player. And he said this year, in discussions with other, other districts, that we had potentially, I think, four days to practice over an eleven-day break period and that other districts had it seven to eight. So I don't think there are consistencies. But again, you know, I haven't done that research. So I think we need to dive in and find that out for sure. And then I guess another concern is, you know, we're looking at putting a calendar out ahead of time and making decisions based on that, but not all the facts are known at that time. Do we? at that time. Do we know if our baseball team's going to be in the playoffs? So now you said, okay, you know, you can't practice on this day, and, and they're in agreement. But now we just made playoffs, and we have this one opportunity to practice and go into that, and it's not an option. So I just think there's a lot of things that we need to look at and consider, and just wanted to express my concerns. And again, I think if, if the meeting were to be held at our next Booster Club meeting, that feedback provided would be, you know, very different, and I know that you guys are basing decisions on that feedback. Thank you.
Thank you. Yep, thank you very much. Anyone else? Thank you for coming. State name and address, please. Hey Ken.
Ken Van Ness, 2603 Yorktown Court. I have to apologize, because 30 days ago, I would have had dress shoes and a coat and a tie on, but those all disappeared, and now you see me as I am. I, I come at this in a variety of different ways. First of all, as an administrator, I worked with the Parks and Recreation Department for 30 years, and went through our relations with the school board for that amount of time, and went through many evolutions of the, of the use policies, obviously, with the schools using Parks and Rec facilities. At the YMCA, as the director there, we also use school facilities. And so, from an administrative standpoint, I'm, I'm kind of aware of how this has developed and where it's gone. I also come as a parent. I had three kids that came through the Eau Claire district, and they were all athletes, and they all participated in various different sports. And then, last but certainly not least, I still, even at this advanced age, am coaching an eighth-grade travel team basketball. And I'm, I'm not going to repeat some of the things that have already been said, but I think they're, that it bears, it bears consideration on your part. I think, in general, the thing that concerns me the most is this policy starts to step in the direction, again, of, of closing the schools more, not opening them more. And currently, when you can't use the schools in the summer, on the weekends, you, and they're very costly to run tournaments in, it becomes, it becomes very difficult. The schools are virtually closed to outside groups on weekends. Now, I will say, the schools are heavily used during the week, in, in the winter and during the school year. And I want to put in a plug for Bev Christensen, because she, she's got a very difficult job trying to coordinate all of these different groups, and, and she works with us and, and does a great job, so I, I do appreciate that. I think when it comes to family time, and kids feeling pressure that they have to participate, I would argue that, from my observation, and all the times that I've been dealing with coaches and, and school administrators, that their good judgment will take precedence. And they know when their kids need a break, and, and they don't hold it. Lots and lots of times where families take vacations over Christmas or over Thanksgiving, and the coaches, the coaches deal with that. I'm not sure that has to be dictated. The way I understand it is, I'm, I'm not exactly sure why the day after Thanksgiving can't be used for practice. And the way the policy states right now, the day after Thanksgiving, they couldn't practice, but then Saturday or Sunday, they could practice, is that, is that correct? Yeah. I'm not exactly sure. The two dates that I questioned on the, on the calendar there were the, the day after Thanksgiving and New Year's Eve Day. At the Y, for example, New Year's Eve Day is a very, very busy day, there's kids all over the place, they're ready to roll. I understand the rest of the dates that were listed. And then my last thing would be, you know, you need to know that there is a sense of frustration in the community over school use. And when the subject comes up, there, I, I get an earful, earful from a lot of people on, on the, on the policy itself. Now, I know you can't go back to the 70s, in fact, most of you weren't even around in the 70s. But when I first came to Eau Claire, they ju, I was a, I had to run programs in the school, and they just gave me a key. So I'd just open the door, get our program people in there, and use the pools and locker rooms, and lock it up when we were done. I know we aren't going back there. But there's a, there's a place where I think we've gone too far in some respects, and there's a middle ground that needs to be reached. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? Commissioner Duex?
Well, one thing that I had not even considered until tonight was all the safety issues that we have with buildings being open, and wondering whether custodians are available all those times, and, so I think that's something that will weigh heavily on us in, in how we're making these decisions. So, either we, I know, we have things like, I worked in fine arts for 37 years, and professors would put, put sticks in the doors so the students could get in on days that the university is closed, or the building, they've told us it's closed, and that means everybody. So, those are issues that we have to be concerned about, especially if somebody comes in and does some harm, and there's nobody there to observe. So, I think we have to really work on that.
Commissioner Luggenbill?
Well, I, I think, in listening to Mr. Prem and Mr. Tangley and Mr. Van Ness all talking, I think one of the common themes, I mean, of course, is a frustration, but also just the need for partnerships and more communication around these issues. And like Mr. Van Ness said, maybe reaching middle ground in some areas. I, I do think that one very important next step would be to put together an equity committee that can give us specific recommendations, and that can include a lot of the stakeholders, probably the folks that we're talking tonight, and more. Because I, I do feel that the answers are not going to be found on this board, it's out in the community. They're the ones doing this work, they're the ones that are living the policy. We're the ones writing it and passing it, but they're living it every day in their organizations, so. And I also think in terms of getting the, the information of comparing what we're doing to other districts, I think that is important. We're the eighth-largest district in the state, so whatever we do does set an example, and we've seen that time and time again, people copy us. So we need to be careful what we do do. So, yeah, I, I feel that an important next step, and my preference would be at, at the next meeting, as an individually considered resolution, to create a, a new equity committee to look specifically at issues pertaining to the facility use agreement and different user groups. That would be my recommendation.
I, I, and I mentioned that before, we've set up the committee structure in order to address that equitably, so we might as well use it, and we set it up for that reason. Go ahead.
Hi, my name's Bob Martin, my address is 10634 24th Avenue. Many of you have information I've already provided from the Booster Club on the north side. I'm the Booster Club president there. I also have three children at north right now. I have a lot of stuff on here, so I won't go into what I wrote down. But I did attend the first Policy and Governance Committee meeting to talk about this, and when I left that day, I was very encouraged that our kids were going to get in the buildings more. Not today. Not. The, the holiday statement up there is different than the day I left, so there was more work done on it, and I understand, you guys do a lot of work, I get it, but it doesn't look like the one that was there the day I was here. If the other four people that were with me came and saw that, their eyes would have opened wide, too. So anyway, they talked about the, the winter break occurrence, and how it would only happen every so often, but as you know by my unfortunate email this week, it happened again with Good Friday. So that tells me that one's going to happen every year, where they're going to have, be off on Friday, and then be asked to practice on Saturday. Coaches need that day. I mean, the seasons are short, the kids spend a lot of time and prepare to get to the varsity level for a very short time. And I assure you, that my cross-section of parents would not be the same as the cross-section of parents that Abby took at the Parent Advisory Group. My parents would love for their kids to be in the gym every day, and those kids would love to be in the gym every day. It's a very short time period, one or two years for a lot of them. Also, that puts coaches in a very bad position, that if they're allowed to, to schedule a practice on that Saturday, they don't look very good if they're interrupting people's So when we do get the information from these other schools, I'm wondering, is it possible to provide the, the Booster Clubs with that information, so that we know? I'll tell you, I know a very large number of coaches in the Big Rivers Conference. I already know what those, those things are going to show, but I'd like to have them Let's see, as far as, oh wait. As far as forming that committee, are there community members on that committee then? That equity?
Well, we, when we had the last one, for the donation, looking at the donation issue, yeah, it was a cross-section of different sectors, parents, students, community members, business people, educators, from both sides of town. So I would assume that we would follow this, a similar process. Right.
We had about 40-
And a board member, so.
We had about 40 people apply. Yep.
I would guard against looking at averages or what other schools do. I mean, I think you guys do a very good job at leading in education. I don't think there's any reason why we can't lead in the culture of athletics and competition. So I would ask that. And my notes go all over the place, so I'm just going to say one last thing, because I think most of it has been said. Dr. Duex brought something up that I've been arguing since the day I started coaching youth girls' basketball, actually with Ken Van Ness over at the Eau Claire Volunteers, and that is the Class III and IV. And I agree with you. I think our kids are being kept out of the gyms for adults, and I love playing basketball, too, but I have a lot of other options. I can go down to the Y, and I can go up to the university for different things. And there are also other parents that wait for the kids to get through the, the calendars, and then I see some have picked a Friday, a private adult has picked a Friday for men to go play basketball, and that's great, but I do think the kids should come first, too. When I started in the district coaching, you, you're right, Parks and Rec was on Wednesday nights, which typically was the faith night. That's no longer the case, they're not on just Wednesday nights. And it's the full span from 6:00 to 9:00 that they're in there. I think it's multiple times, the gyms that are important to everybody are North Star, Delong, and South, because they have regulation courts, you know, regulation heights, and they're bigger courts, and, and you get a better work out there, and those are the, the courts that Parks and Rec uses. So I would encourage that change, that, I think that would be a good step. And really, I don't think you hear conflicts about it, because quite honestly, we just gave up and took what we could get.
So, Bob, can I ask you a question?
Yep.
So, kids would practice at 8:30, 9 o'clock at night?
Husky hoops, I know for sure.
They do?
And I believe, I believe the Volunteers have had kids in till 9:30. Yep.
And that's common?
We, we've always tried to, to put the 7th and 8th graders in the later slots, but occasionally you'll find a 5th or 6th grade team at those times.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. And I believe volleyball is the same way.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yep. We appreciate it, too.
I just have a couple of questions, I was trying to take some notes while you were, while you were speaking. One of the things that, that you said was that we'd send out the calendar of all the days that the schools closed, and the, the dates on there that would be closed, and then coaches could look at that and say, well, should I have a practice that weekend or not? And I think you're going about that backwards. It should be, here's what's going on, sit down with the coaches and look at it, and when can we make the schools available to our teams and to our students, which is what this body and everyone that works for this district is there to do, is when can we make that available to the students and the organizations, not, well, do, do I hold a practice, or is it going to be too big of a conflict, are parents going to be upset? It should be, when can we make that school available? As far as the, the, one of the concerns was that, you know, if, if a, if a building is able to be used by the community, then you run the risk, different safety risks and security risks and things like that. Does a building being used, or a gym being used, have to be the same as the schools wide open? Someone mentioned the doors being open. I can tell you, when my daughter was a freshman and sophomore, before she could drive herself, she went to early morning swim practice, and the doors weren't just wide open. They were there, and one of the coaches was at the door to let them in. And a coach can tell his team, you need to show up between this time and this time, and we're going to let you in, the doors don't all have to be wide open to the school, and people just walking around the school just because someone's having practice. The other thing that was mentioned, and kind of went back and forth, at one point you said that currently the district doesn't require custodians being present? I'm assuming that was for just actual school team practices, or for facility use?
Just for, for school. So we don't require, the coaches can let people in.
Okay. And, and so my question, I guess, would be, why, why do we have to have the custodian presence? Can't we put more of that onus on the organizations that use the facility to clean up after themselves, regulate who's coming in and out? And I understand that there's, there's a, a certain amount of risk involved with that, and, and I can appreciate that. But the state of Wisconsin also has facility use agreements all the time that we use in, in the armories. And I can tell you, we've got some extremely sensitive equipment sitting in, in the National Guard Armories, and we don't, you're able to do those agreements without requiring that one of us that works at the armory is physically there while they have their events. It happens all over the state with all kinds of facilities. So I would encourage you to, to at least look into the possibility of that, that some of these groups could use these, because you put up the, the different weeks on that calendar, and it's like, there was a lot of yellow, that the community can't use the schools, and when the, the kids aren't in school, man, I would love for my 10-year-old son to not be stuck in the house over Christmas break. Like, get down and play basketball, you know? His team wasn't able to practice that week, but yet we were able to go to neighboring schools and have scrimmages with them, while they also, in the next gym, had their open volleyball. So it does happen, it is able to be done in other districts, and I would just ask that we really look at that, because I think, again, like I said, it, it should be the focus on when can we make this more available for the students that we are here to serve, not when does it fit our staffing availability or needs? I, I guess that should be the opposite priority.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Thank you, everyone. Anything else from the board? For the good of the order? Okay. Any requests for future agenda items?
Just for the Equity Committee resolution.
Yep. Anything else? Can I have a motion for adjournment, please? But no one go anywhere, because we have to set agendas.
So moved.
So moved by Commissioner Luggenbill, second by Commissioner Vu. Yep. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. We are adjourned. Thanks, everyone, for, I wonder how much snow is out there?